I don't want to characterize it, literally characterize their but so far they've been indicating to be a very, very willing, very good seller. And they're very willing to work with the municipality and I believe they would continue to be. I think the biggest issue though is getting funding for the acquisition. When we began this study, there was a presumption that we were going to have funds on a ballot proposition, bond proposition to, for an acquisition. And you may recall in February, when the Assembly passed the bond proposition, they removed funding that was proposed for acquisition of a site. Now, the new station's currently going after additional, there's additional sources of funding that they're pursuing in order to be able to effectuate this project. They also felt that this was, you know, reconsidered when they're looking at the current site and the plans have been adopted, both the Anchorage 2020's more recent or the more recent downtown comprehensive plan. And the downtown comprehensive plan calls for this site to be redeveloped with a mix of residential and commercial uses. And because of its location, basically the west end, kind of periphery of the downtown business district and abouting the park strip. It has a lot of location and factors that make it attractive for redevelopment. And the idea was that we might, we basically utilized the funds from the sale of this property to the relocation and development of a new facility for the health department. But I believe that if the funding is available, that the acquisition shouldn't take that much time.
Okay, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't add a long, it's hard to tell, but wouldn't add a long timeframe to, to development of the, of the new building then?
Don't believe it. The biggest challenge is probably going to be getting the funding for the actual design construction of the new facility. We don't currently have funding for that yet.
But that's kind of even, even spread across all three sites though, it's the same issue, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I have one other small question.
Okay, and then Ms. Pies.
In regard to Site One, the 825 L Street, there's a, mentioned that, that there's an option to purchase adjacent lots. What adjacent lots are those? You're currently using three lots to the north.
Correct.
Across Eighth Avenue there, I believe, for parking, right? Is that the ones that are being referred to here?
Yeah, those are the, those are, those lots are currently managed by the Heritage Land Bank.
Oh, so the Muni owns them.
Doesn't, the Muni knows the lot that we're talking, but I'm only thinking as far as we're aware.
Yeah, to the east, I mentioned, there's, there are three lots that are for sale to the east across the alley from the current building.
Oh, okay.
Those are, that may be the ones that you're
The one, they run on K Street?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Ms. Pies?
That clears it up.
Yes, what, where's the appraised value of the municipality's lot parking and current building and site at, Site Number One?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay. If I can, another couple more quick questions. The, just went through very quickly, but I wasn't sure what synergies this downtown site might have with services that are located downtown. I didn't see that that was spelled out as clearly as for Site Two.
I'm sorry, is that mentioned?
But what are, what are some of the other administrative offices or sites that serve clients of DHHS that are located near downtown? Just sort of trying to see if there's a nucleus down there that this fits into.
I think the major site that our folks will be involved with would be either at Medicaid Health Center, we do share a fair amount of clients between us for core medical services. We have a contract right now with Anchorage Medical and Surgical Clinic that we send TP clients to for certain X-rays. Certainly, our folks also, some of, some of our staff is involved with going to public assistance, which I believe is on Gambell Street. And certainly from a staff perspective, we do have a fair amount of interaction back and forth between us and City Hall, like you expect from any of the other administrative functions. I think those are the major things I can think of.
And just so I can be clear on this, I, I'm familiar with Anchorage Medical and Surgical Clinic, that's on K Street or H Street or something like that. The Anchorage Neighborhood Health Clinic is moving, correct?
Well, they're moving to 3500 Tudor.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Wang?
Just in terms of assessing site acquisition costs, if we go with one of the other two, one of the non-Muni owned sites, what happens to the existing facility at Ninth and K? I mean, is that a tear down for someone to buy or?
I think what hap, what happens to the existing facility is, the city has talked about the option of selling it in terms of acquiring money to help fund the new facility, selling with a temporary leaseback option so that we could stay in that space until the new facility is available. And then I think it'll be to the next owner to decide how they want to use the land. But I think that that's the, the general idea is that we'll be able to recoup enough money to stay on that site and build something new. So, so one of the considerations about that site for us would be if we were to locate in the downtown, is that although in construction, the city would have to relocate the apartment potentially, and so there'd be relatively substantial costs included in that as well.
Anything further, Ms. Pies?
Yes, with regard to site improvements, I didn't hear any site improvements that would be needed in terms of roads, for example, at the downtown site? Is that correct, that the roads are adequate there?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, was there any consideration given to whether the road improvements at the midtown site?
I'm not aware that on the downtown site, you may not be aware, but they're actually going to be improving Ninth Avenue this summer.
Right.
From basic, well, from S Street to Cordova, I believe.
Right, so there'll be an east-west walking route all the way to Fairview, basically. Okay. One other question, with regard to the road improvements at the midtown site, was there any consideration of the fact that maybe Cuddy Park wouldn't necessarily benefit from a major new road access along its northern boundary? Because I believe that's where the amphitheater is, for example. And so it's sort of an outdoor gathering area that's buffered right now by the post office.
You know, when you look at the master plan in the plot for Lucy Cuddy Park, there is thirty feet there that is reserved. And we talked to the Parks Department, one of the issues is, is basically what the design of Figueroa Avenue is going to be. And, and the intent is that you actually have on-street parking on one side of the street. So that it would be basically designed as a, as a local street, be two-way traffic with parking on one side with sidewalks. And so, you know, it's not intended to function as a, a trail of any means, but it is intended to be able to provide additional access actually to Lucy Cuddy Park.
Okay. I had another question, but it just slipped my mind, it had to do with access. Oh, the costs. It seems that in this fiscal climate, we ought to have some sort of package of costs for these sites. And I can't really get at it. One of the questions here would be the road improvements, and then at the other site would be whether or not additional parcels were, were purchased and whether there'd be a temporary relocation. So, I guess maybe that's not something, I don't know if you can answer that off the top of your head or not, but I would think that we ought to know as much as we could about the whole investment involved at those two sites.
I'm just still working on, you know, this was, so pretty much over the month ago now, we didn't have that information, but we're still working on getting that information. Yes, we agree, the better information we have. The one other thing I would, would say, the guy in the midtown site, and they need for expanding, extending Beryl and building Figueroa Avenue. One could argue that, that that's really a, a community cost that benefits not just the health department, but basically the users of Lucy Cuddy Park as well as the library. They are going to be benefiting with those, with those access improvements, not just the health department. So there's a question of whether or not, you know, that project could be put in the capital improvement program, basically as a, as a community facility cost, not tied specifically to the health department.
And I guess I would just respond that I think it would take a little closer look at the park to make that with great certainty. Because, you know, there are some benefits to having a park to which you can control vehicle access versus be able to park your car right at the edge of the park and
It's not a subject for the, our next five minutes, and we do have some more questions out here, but I will tell you, before we address the issue of a road for that area, we're going to have to take a long look at the whole traffic circulation pattern for this area. Because any change to the circulation, there are so many businesses now that are, that are in that area, as well as we have the institutional uses that are building up. And I, I am familiar with the, the Department of Health, I go to regular meetings there, and I'm familiar with the level of traffic in there, in and out. And so it's not a casual, you know, casual traffic. It has quite a bit that comes in and out, and so it would need to be looked at. Mr. Weddleton, you had a couple, and then I have a question that I need to ask, and we have five minutes.
Okay. One's quick, you may have said this, but on Site One, it sounds like you would get rid of the parking that's to the north of the building, which is three lots that's currently HLB land, and you would buy three lots to the east of the building?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, that's still yet to be worked out. I think the interest is if, if we get another site for the Department of Health and Human Services, that we would not only be able to sell the 825 L Street site, but we'd be able to be in a better position to also sell the three lots to the north because it would no longer be needed for employee parking.
So, so what were the three lots off K Street for?
Those are lots that are currently in private ownership and
So the reason that we would look to get additional lots is because we don't have adequate parking right now. But in addition to that, if we were going to rebuild, like tear down and rebuild, one of the considerations would be expanding the footprint so that we could have a larger, a three-story building instead of a five-story building. And if we do that, we'll have to eat into our current parking. So just in order to make the design that we envision, I think we need that additional space to really improve the building in a way that we've kind of envisioned it. But, but those are some of the major reasons.
Yeah. And, you know, the reason we include them is because it would provide much better design flexibility.
Okay. What was the opposition to being part of a larger building? That would give you opportunity to expand in the future and?
Well, the part of it, the part of it is just the complexity involved in negotiating that at this point in time. That's a lot of part of it. When we looked at sites downtown, we looked at some of the owners downtown to see what the possibility would be of being incorporated into a larger project. And, you know, they're, some, they're kind of apprehensive about that, couldn't get a commitment, so they moved on. There's a possibility, as I said, a couple of sites are out from Midtown. And, you know, the more we delve into it, the more we realize, if, if we didn't have other alternatives that had other attributes that were more favorable, we maybe would have given them further consideration, but when we looked at the other alternatives, such as opposed to service site, it made it a lot easier. And we actually had better, more favorable selling attributes than some of the other sites.
Okay. Thanks. That's good, thanks.
Okay, I'll go be very quick, we just have a couple of minutes here. I'm curious, why, if we're in a hurry to make this decision, since it seems like there are a lot of unknowns, and we don't have funding?
Yeah, I don't know if there is a hurry.
Okay.
There, there may have been a desire, I think, to, to be able to have a decision based upon getting, you know, getting funding for acquisition on the ballot, having the public have a sense of what we're considering before the auction. You know, that is, that may, good part of this driving, this, this schedule.
Okay.
We recognize that, that ultimately, whatever is decided is going to be carried out by the new administration.
Right.
You know, that, that's important.
That's, that's a good enough answer. That's for right now, in the interest of time.
You want, I'm sorry. Yeah. Do you want to?
I would just add one thing to that, is that, and this, this building has been conceived of, I mean, for a new building for many, many years.
Oh, I
And we are potentially still, it's still sort of on the table, there might be an opportunity to take advantage of stimulus funding. The further along we get in the process, the better opportunities we have. So that's one of the other reasons we're interested.
Okay, I'm, I'm aware that for a long time, there was the thought of 3500 Tudor Road. I was curious to hear about how that isn't a good site now because of the transit concerns and the safety for crossing Tudor Road. And I was even more curious when I heard that, when I think about people from Anchorage Neighborhood Health Center, they're moving out there, and a lot of their patients are old and infirm and sick. And how is it going to be any safer for their clients than it is going to be for yours? Quite frankly, I'm not as nearly as concerned about the people that work in your building. I, the only people I'm concerned with are the public we serve. And one of my biggest concern about the location is how the public's going to get there. I'm not concerned about employee parking, I am concerned about the people we serve and that population of people that often have no choice but to go there for services, for health services. So why would it be safe for that client group and not people for the health department?
First of all, that facility, as a non-private, non-private, didn't go, didn't have to go through a formal site selection process. We're not supporting that location.
Okay.
But, it is, it is, I say we, I suppose we qualify that. I said, the planning expressed judgment, it's not an ideal site. But, it, it was, I mean, we went through the process of developing the two-day road, three-day running, three-day master plan, it was identified in there as, as a potential site. The other thing is, if you are concerned about it, there is a, there's somewhere, I believe, is going to be holding a hearing, you know, the end of this month or May, on the lease agreement for
For the land?
For the land for the Anchorage Neighborhood Health Clinic. And you may, you're individually, or the commission, may want to give them some
We can give them that. I have just
Advice on.
One more question, and then a, a quick comment. On the issue of parking, is that something that we're required because of labor agreements to provide for staff?
Actually, we do not have to provide parking to our staff, and I never meant to give the impression that I was more concerned about that, but I am. I'm, I'm first and foremost concerned about the people we serve. I'm just saying that it's been sort of a longstanding tradition, and if we're going to, right now, some staff get it and some staff don't, and that if we're going to build
I know it's a problem, I work downtown.
Right, no, so I mean, I guess that I'm just saying, if we want to build the holistic sort of site, I would be looking towards sort of getting everything that I can get.
Right.
And one other concern I would have about 3500 Tudor is that there's a lot of other municipal services there who would like to expand, or the buses would have to be relocated. And I think it would be very difficult to do that in a way that didn't create a lot of difficulty for the department and its other sister departments.
And I'm not suggesting 3500 Tudor, believe me, I wasn't necessarily advocating for that. Okay, the last thing is, just, my, my concern is that, have, have you taken into consideration the pop, specific populations you can, that you primarily serve? And with regard to the convenience this will be for them to come out as far as Midtown?
We haven't done a huge amount of doing that. We have, in the past, there's been some surveys that were used to inform this, but we haven't done anything, we are looking to do some additional analysis that we'd be happy to share with you.
Okay. And maybe go out to some of the community councils, for, you know your demographics, where the majority of your people come from, and, and you just
I, I think that people sometimes perceive that our demographics are a lot of lower-income folks, but really, we do a lot of services for people across the spectrum. And many of, many of them, I think that Medicaid Health Center, for example, found out that one of its biggest places was more in the Midtown area where they were giving folks, and it's not as concentrated as you might think. So just in terms of thinking about restaurant owners, people like that, not everybody is located, and there are some of the people who do a lot of foot traffic to us, so I would just
We have a lot of employees that come in for testing and stuff.
We have some, some of that, but really, we are much less in the direct service business now than we were when I started at the department five years ago.
Well, thank you so much. We have to get on with our regular meeting. By the way, I got my shingle shot there because it was the only place in town at the time that you could get it, when you were, if you were a big grown-up. Thank you very much. We look forward to next week. And thank you, Mr. Nelson, you moved right along with your presentation. We're going to stand down for just a couple of minutes and move into our public hearing And I need to talk to Ms. Chambers for a minute, if she's here.
Okay.
I'm going to have to dig in. Time to go to work. They, they left. All right, gentlemen.
We know Connie.
Yeah. Time to go to work.
No, I have a headache, I should have gotten ibuprofen.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be a long one. Oh, well, now, there's no
Yeah, I think it's a gravel. They never last, do they? All right. Who needs to be monitoring the Blackberry's football game?
I think all the Geo-Hi dogs turn out for the
Bad dogs?
This particular gravel site.
All right. Who's the head in the, in the game, Mr. Wang?
According to my electronic device, it's North Carolina 55, Michigan State 34 at halftime.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah? I saw a game.
All right, now that we've had the official phones, we can call our meeting to order. Finally. Do they, because we're short. Okay. All right. I will call the April 6th, 2009 meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will the secretary call to roll, please?
Asham?
Here.
Phil? President?
Here.
Wettleton?
Here.
Wang?
Here.
Here. We have a quorum, one, two, three, four, five, six, barely. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, are the minutes of February 9, 25th, March 2nd, and March 9?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
A move for approval of the minutes of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission for February 9th, February 25th, March 2nd, and March 9th.
I need a second in my little window. Thank you, Mr. Weddleton.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was not present for the March 9th meeting, and I'll be abstaining from voting on that.
Okay. Any corrections?
I, I also was not at the March 9th meeting. And on February 25th, on page six, there's a, well, partway down, halfway down, it says otherwise, R3 in the other case was inappropriately dense, it should say appropriately dense.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, page six, the 11th line, line down, the first word. Okay, 11, I'm sorry, that was March 11, February 11, page six. Our page, okay. Okay, and what was on that page?
Well, it's February 25th, page six, line 11, the word inappropriately should be appropriately.
Okay, I got that. Any objection? Hearing none, those are approved. Okay, the next item on the agenda are disclosures.
Okay, Ms. Pies, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
No, I don't.
Okay, Mr. Frederick?
No.
Mr. Shipp? Ms. Jones?
Yes. A couple of things. I will be abstaining, because I was previously excused, from the, um, resolution, uh, item D1C. This had to do with the Anchorage Water, wastewater utility reservoir, um, it's, uh, num, resolution number 2009 dash 010. And, uh, also, uh, on our agenda, there is case number, uh, 2009 dash 045. The petitioners, Aklutna Inc., uh, for a natural resource extraction. I've been excused from these in the past and, uh, would ask to be excused from this one, uh, because it's the same set of circumstances. Um, I, the law firm I work for represents CERI, which owns the gravel, um, and so it has a financial interest in it.
Okay. Um, in this particular case, I think we're, we're still going to need to vote on this particular thing, so I'll accept a positive motion requiring Ms. Jones to participate.
Should I do it, Rod?
Okay.
See, I'd make a move that, um, Commissioner Jones participate in the, uh, what are we looking at? Case 2009 45.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'm Mr. Frederick.
Thank you. Okay, this is, uh, I think the same reasons that we've always had for Ms. Jones whenever, uh, Aklutna comes up, and specifically with the, the CERI owning the, the rights to the gravel. So is there any, uh, any discussion from any members of the board? Okay, I will not be supporting this motion. Any further discussion? Okay, since there is disagreement, we're going to have to use our machines. No vote, uh, prevents, uh, Ms. Jones from participating. A yes vote requires her to participate. Please vote. You do not have to participate, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Any further disclosures?
No.
Okay, fine. Uh, let's see. Mr. Wang?
Um, actually, the firm I'm working for now also represents CERI on other matters, including land use matters, um, not in Anchorage or in Aklutna, uh, but we recently did some work for CERI on another project. Um, I have no knowledge of, um, this particular case, didn't work on it, have nothing to do with it, but feel that disclosure should be made.
Okay. Do, do you feel as though there's, uh, any, any financial gain on your part of one way or the other in this particular case?
None, none to me, certainly.
I, I feel as though that it's just a disclosure, and I don't think it's, uh, something that would prohibit you from participating in the case. Unless you insist that we go through the, go through the exercise.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm not sure. Is there some inconsistency with there being a conflict for Ms. Jones and not for me? I'm not asking for there to be a conflict, but, um, this is a new issue for me, because prior to this evening, I'd always represented Aklutna, so it was, it was a different situation, set of facts.
Okay. Well, I think maybe we better, we better perform the same exercise as, uh, as we went through with Ms. Jones, so let, I'll beg.
Before we vote, I guess, um, Ms. Jones works for a law firm that represents CERI on an ongoing basis. Is that correct? I'm just trying to see what the, what the similarities is. And Mr. Wang works for a law firm that now has begun to represent CERI. Is that correct?
Yes, we recently represented CERI on a, a project that is concluded, so we don't have currently active, ongoing, um, matter with them.
And that may well be the difference.
That might be the difference. We need to be clear, though, because, as if I understand it, Ms. Jones' firm has an ongoing history of representation of CERI, whereas Mr. Wang's firm has one, uh, discreet representation to his knowledge and no retainer arrangement or that sort of thing.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You know, that, that's basically why initially, it sounded like you had a one-time contract and that was it. And it's, it's, it's terminated or it's complete, so.
I mean, there's no, there's no letter terminating the relationship. I mean, there's no ongoing work. There's not to say that next week there couldn't be.
Right.
I mean, there's, there's the possibility I could be called tomorrow.
Right.
There's the possibility that Ms. Jones' firm could never be called again. I mean, it's.
You just never know.
You just never know.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's.
But it sounds like both he and I are in the same position in that neither one of us individually, at least at this point in time, stand to gain any financial benefit. I don't ever, because I'm an hourly employee, but (laugh) I'm a bottom feeder. He's a big dog.
No. But there's, I mean, there's no financial interest that I have in this
Right.
matter that's before the commission.
No. I don't ever.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, I think we'd better go ahead and, uh, accept a positive motion requiring you to participate and then go from there, so. Okay, and Mr. Frederick, you've seconded it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, is there any, uh, further discussion?
I, I just, I wanted to make sure Mr. Wang, um, had said, in case I missed it before, that he feels, um, free to consider this case entirely on the particulars and they know it feels he would be influenced.
I think I can do that.
Sorry for having to ask, but I just thought, say that.
Any further comments from commissioners? Okay, a, uh, yes vote, uh, will require him to participate, a no vote will excuse him from participation. Please vote. Now, Mr. Wang, you're directed to participate. Any further disclosures, sir?
No.
Thank you.
And so that means we have, will have five people eligible to participate in that matter?
Yes.
Okay. So now I need to check with the petitioners.
Madam Chair, for the record, my name is Tim Potter with DOW, HCM, uh, representing Aklutna, CERI, and AAP tonight. Um, we would like to go forward with a, a larger quorum, uh, and I wanted to ask about next week.
Staff?
As I say, we don't see any problem in adding it to next week. The only item on the agenda, I understand right now, is the, uh, public hearing for the Department of Health and Human Services site selection.
Okay. Can we put this under unfinished business, so it comes up
Yes.
as the first item for hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be great. What's the expectation for attendance next week? Do you know?
Sunday at this time.
Unknown, but I plan to be here. I have to leave by about 10:30 because I'm going on a trip.
Okay. We would like to, uh, postpone until next week.
Oh, I'm excused anyway. No problem. I'll get out of here early.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we, uh, postpone this until time certain next week.
Thank you. Is there any objection? No objection.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let's continue with our disclosures here and finish those off. Uh, Mr. Weddleton, do you have anything to disclose?
No disclosures.
And I have none.
Okay. Now, we are back to the consent agenda. Yes, Mr. I.
Move for approval of the consent agendas, items 1A, B, C, D, E, and F.
And then I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I wish to pull one F.
Okay. Anything else? Yes.
Um, I was not present for consideration on, um, E and F.
And then just, we'll note for the record that you've staying on those.
Thank you.
Likewise for me.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six. Well, we won't have enough people to approve E and F then. So.
No, I read the minutes and thought it looked in line with the minutes. Is that adequate?
That, that will work. Did you read the minutes and?
I studied the minutes.
You studied the minutes?
For both E and F.
For both E and F. Okay, yes, that will work. Did you study the minutes for E and F? Then you don't get a pass either.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
I was working on my tan.
You were working on your tan. No scapegoats for you. Anybody want to pull anything else? I won't make anybody pull C. I will just abstain from it. And we'll have, note the record accordingly, Madam Secretary. Okay, um, is there any, uh, we will, we have F off the table, so is there any objection to approving everything except F on the consent Hearing no objection, everything except F is approved, and I abstained for C, from C. Ms. Pease, F.
Yes, um, I would like to suggest that, um, we either take another week to consider F or, or, um, or not, not pass it for the following reasons. We had a detailed discussion about the ranking criteria, the tip ranking criteria with, um, Mr. Lyons here in the room, um, and gave verbally or orally a number of reference changes. The way this is worded in the last resolved paragraph there, um, priming and zoning resolves to spread it, the criteria, ranking criteria and nomination forms for approval with the above referenced recommended changes. Well, um, AMATs didn't circulate those, their iteration of those changes back to us. The only version I saw that was in the minutes, um, and they also prepared a, somewhat of an issues response that Ms. Jones somehow got wind of and emailed to all of us at 4 o'clock on Friday. Um, it was in a spreadsheet format, which I wasn't able to look at very well on, on the computer, but it looked as if the issues response rejected probably half of our recommendations rather perfunctorily with the comment that staff does not agree, or the comment that staff feels this is already covered. And there was no cross-referencing of how it was covered or where. Um, so I'm not sure that our referenced recommended changes are going to have much traction at the TAC. The other problem with it was, it wasn't, I guess we're used to the really good work that Erica and some of the other planning staff do, where we get a draft back that has the changes inserted into the text, so we can see what it really means. Um, in this case, there didn't appear to be anything that the TAC could look at and say, yes, we agree with that P and Z change, or no, we don't agree with that P and Z change. It was a lot of cross-referencing. And I'm just not sure how, um, TAC works and whether they're going to go that extra mile to put three or four documents together and flip back and forth. So I didn't feel that our recommended changes got, um, a very good issue response or a very, what shall I say, um, legible or comprehensible presentation going forward to TAC. So, um, I'm, I'm now in support of this resolution, and I guess I would ask others to consider whether they want to ask for a better presentation of our recommendations or, or just to, to vote it down.
Well, we have to send forward a recommendation, so I would suggest that we perhaps postpone it for a week and, uh, come back with revisions to it. Now, I know that the Technical Advisory Committee is meeting, I think, this week, Thursday, and, uh, I can go to that meeting and tell them that they're going to be getting our response and our official resolution a little bit late because the summary that was prepared for them is, uh, somewhat deficient and doesn't really reflect adequate, you know, adequately to reflect our, uh, action. Uh, and so we need to enhance it. And so they can sit, and I know that they got our minutes, our draft minutes, um, but, uh, I can, you know, explain to them, or I can either send a writing to them or attend the meeting, I'll do one of the two, and, um, let them know that our resolution, when it's in final form, they will receive it, and then we can certainly make sure the Policy Committee receives it before they take action on it. We need to get it right. We, we don't have the option of not responding
Okay.
in a positive way. Yes, Mr. Weddleton?
So, maybe we could ask them to give us a track changes version of their scoring sheet, and we would work from that next time we look at this?
I think that'd be excellent. And since we're supposedly approving the project nomination form, which we did touch upon somewhat, uh, if you recall, for example.
Right.
We all felt that the project nomination form should ask, what is the traffic problem? Not just jump right to what is the project.
Right.
Um, I'd like to see how they're changing their project nomination form as well. I think that's an excellent idea, a track changes version that shows what exactly they're endorsing for changes as a result of our recommendations and our discussion.
Okay. I got that noted.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Jones, um, I can, um, I'll call, uh, Mr. Lyons in the morning and give him a heads up on this, and if he has further questions, would you like me to have him call you and Ms. Pease?
Yes, if you'd have him call me.
Okay.
Um, yes.
Because you're going to be there Thursday at the TAC, and then if he has anything further, he'll.
Yes. And I'm going to submit a writing to him also.
Excellent.
I talked to him earlier today on some other things, but I'll get in touch with him tomorrow also.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh-huh. So I guess we need to just move to postpone that. Yes.
I have another question. Concerning the, the meeting that's scheduled for Thursday, is there going to be any decision at that meeting based on the input that we theoretically should have approved tonight? Does anybody know?
Um, yeah. There could be, but they have our minutes, our draft minutes from our meeting, and if they read those, they're going to see the intent of our action that we took. It's just not going to be in a nice, tidy form. It's going to be as we spoke it. And so they will have it. And that was what I forwarded to you on, on Friday.
Right.
But it just seems to me that this nice, tidy format that you're talking about really lays it out to, as to what our recommendations were.
It's a, it's a.
Very, very obvious.
Well, it is, but it's very abbreviated.
Okay, but if, but if we were to do this, you know, like the track changes, that would really show what the changes were?
That would show, it would absolutely show what the, what it is. And, yes, it would show what it is.
And, um, I guess I don't, I understand, Mr. Dresch, we don't want us to miss a deadline for commenting, but as Ms. Jones said, they have our minutes. They can hopefully pick up on some of that, but, uh, it would be even better if they could actually see the changes embedded in the text, so they really can grasp it. We don't, I don't think we lose either. Whether, um, AMATs isn't going to do this document for them by Thursday.
No. And I, I, I will make a call to a couple of folks on the Technical Advisory Committee, too, and, uh, suggest, I'll just make those calls tomorrow. Okay? And I'm going to be confident the information is going to get And I'm going to be confident the information is going to get to them and somebody's going to pay attention to it. So I think we just need to move to postpone it.
Madam Chair, move to postpone.
Until next week.
Item D1F until the following scheduled meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. I see you're in the queue, Mr. Weddleton. Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I already spoke. Thanks.
Okay. All right, is there any objection to postponing F until next week? Hearing no objections, it is postponed. Moving on. All right, we finally made it to unfinished business. The, let's see. First matter on our, under unfinished business is the master plan review for Girdwood South Who is going to take that up?
Madam Chair, I will, I'll explain it.
You'll explain it, okay.
On January 26th, early this year, following a public hearing on the Girdwood South Townsite Master Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval subject to a number of conditions. One of them is to require that future individual developments basically go through a development master plan process before development occurs. When I became aware of this, I asked for a motion of reconsideration on that particular condition and there was a motion made to basically reconsider that particular condition as it applies to Phase One, not Phase Two or Three, but just to the Phase One area. And that's the purpose for this consideration. The reason that I asked for this reconsideration is because if you require a development master plan, it raises the real potential for conflict and confusion when a development goes forward. And like to basically try to explain this as simple as I could, it's laid out in the memorandum before you, but what I'd like to do is kind of highlight some of the main points. First of all, an understanding of the master planning process, in the Girdwood Regulations in Chapter Nine, there are basically two types of master planning that are called for. One of them is an area master plan, the other one is a development master plan. This, the idea of an area master plan is that it's intended to lay out the basic land use pattern, the basic infrastructure, the road system, any parts that are necessary, you know, any infrastructure, public facility infrastructure requirements that are necessary before the property is subsequently plotted and made available for development. In contrast with that, the development master plan is basically intended to go to a much greater level of detail, but the key is that in the development master plan, the development master plan actually is to create and identify the specific development dimensional and design standards that would apply to that area. Now, when the Girdwood area was, when these regulations were codified and Girdwood is zoned according to this, there were only three areas that were required to have a development master plan. And they were basically the golf course area, which is a GCR one, the Girdwood Commercial Recreational Area One, GCR Two, which is the current resort base area, GCR Three, which is the future Glacier River Creek Resort Base area. The reason for that is that these are areas that don't normally meet the traditional design layout of a community town site. Resort base areas are much more compact and they have a different set of standards than your community development areas. And so these areas were basically allowed to create their specific design standards as part of their master development planning process. And that's why they're called out for development master plans. In contrast with that, the area that's identified as Phase One is already zoned with specific design standards. It's Zone GC Five, okay? It's a commercial district. And in the commercial district, there are very specific design standards called out for in subsequent sections of Chapter Nine that have to be met for any new development. There are also requirements in the GC Five District that if your development is under 2,000 square feet, it's a permitted use, but it still has to meet all these design requirements. If it's between 2 and 4,000 square feet in size, it has to go through a site plan review, administrative site plan review. If it's over 4,000 square feet, it has to go through a major site plan review, which is conditional use process, so it's formal public hearing process. The point making, it's a pretty small threshold if, when you think about it. So basically, any future development is going to have to meet the design standards that are already in place as well as go through a, depending on the size, go through a formal review process before it can happen. The problem with the condition of also adding a development master plan process to each individual parcel development is that, one, you're creating a possibility of conflict. Somebody come in and go, I don't agree with the standards in Chapter Nine. Here are my proposed standards, which is what the development master plan would allow. It'd create conflict. And the reality is, is that regardless of that condition, our position is, and I think we have a position, is that the standards that are called out for in the GC Five District still apply. They haven't been waived. So this is the reason, primary reason why we felt that the development master plan requirement is very problematic in Phase One. I took this down to the Girdwood Land Use Committee and explained it to them. You know, initially, when you passed the motion for reconsideration, they weren't happy because they didn't understand the reason why. So I went down and explained to them in one of their Monday meetings and explained to them the reason. And I used it as an example, a development that went through the conditionless process because it was over 4,000 square feet and it had to meet all the design standards. And this was a development that was basically just north of the post office, across the Alaska Highway in the New Girdwood Townsite area, which has basically, it's not the GC Five District, it's a GC Seven District, but it still has the same design standards and the same processes that are required as a GC Five. And I explained to them the process that that developer had to go through, that's what's intended here in the GC Five District. They understood that and they basically then understood. What they were upset about was the fact that they were, in their mind, they felt they were somewhat misled because the, you know, the planning process, including the master plan, people involved in that process didn't really understand the distinction between master plan, area master plan and development master plan. And so there was a perception that there would be a follow-up process. Well, in all likelihood, there will be a follow-up process for any buildings over 4,000 square feet. It's for that reason that we're basically recommending, and for your reference, in the memorandum that went out to you last week, there is an attachment, one that does show you the, basically the adopted master plan map that identifies Phases One, Two and Three. And so you can see the area that it would apply to. The planning staff's recommendation is basically to approve the motion for reconsideration and to amend your earlier action to remove the requirement for a development master plan from the Phase One area and to modify the text in the South Townsite Master Plan on page 9.4 accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Are there any questions of staff? Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair. For some reason, there are a couple of things that were missing from my packet or maybe there's a second delivery that I didn't get. So I haven't seen this memorandum, E1, but I did want to ask, was there an official letter of agreement from the Land Use Committee or the Girdwood Board of Supervisors after your February, I believe it was ninth, meeting, Mr. Nelson?
We do not have a formal letter. What we have is basically the discussions reflected in the minutes of the meeting of Monday, February ninth at the Land Use Committee. I asked the committee chair, Jerry Reichlin, if he felt it was, it'd be appropriate and necessary for me to come down the following Monday to the Board of Supervisors meeting. And he said, no. He didn't feel it was that they would explain it to the Board of Supervisors, the reason for the amendment to remove the provision for the development master plan for the Phase One area. They did understand it at the, and concurred at the Land Use Committee meeting.
Yeah. If I may follow up, I guess the reason I ask is because when we were down there for the initial meeting on this, they were very upset that they hadn't received notice for whatever reasons, I can't remember them now, about the original meeting that was scheduled up here in Anchorage. And so I just wanted to be sure that we have been very careful procedurally to make sure that they know what we're proposing and we know what they're proposing and it's the same, the same thing or there's some consensus there.
I can assure you that's the case. We were, when it was initially calendared back last fall, there was a change and unfortunately we were unable to clarify that change down in Girdwood. They weren't notified. That's why when I talked to the chair, we immediately said, yes, we're going to rehear this, and it was reheard in January. When I asked for the notice of reconsideration, Mr. Reichlin was here, present when that happened. I talked to him afterwards, told him I would come down and explain it, which I did, and they were satisfied with that. I asked him if it was, if he felt I should go to the Board of Supervisors meeting and he felt, no, it's really not necessary because they would basically explain it to them themselves. And part of the reason was because we had, I had a meeting here with you that following Monday. And so it was, you know, it's preferable to be here rather than down there. And Jerry assured me that they'd basically be able to explain it. So I really feel that we are covered as far as the people in Girdwood knowing and understanding the reason for this action.
I guess I have one more question. One of the concerns that I remember from the February, no, the meeting that we had down there, I guess it was January, was that a lot of the Phase One of the town site wasn't parceled out yet and the community would have some interest in how it was tracted for sale by Heritage Land Bank, including especially how parking might be shared among the different uses because there was a strong preference that parking be very carefully located as it was on the North Townsite. So if plating is the only step left before sale of parcels, how will that desire for parking planning be accomplished?
There are a couple of things that, there is going to be a plating process and there will be, and it's a very, it'll be a very public process as far as laying out the configuration of the parcels to be developed, to be disposed of for development. There will also be attracting out of public tracks for specific public uses. Relative to the parking, there is interest in establishing a community, excuse me, a community parking area in the, in the South Townsite area. In addition to that, according, there are very specific design standards in Chapter Nine that allow for on-street parking to count for your parking requirement as well as the ability to locate within community, designated community parking areas that are within 600 feet of the property. So there are, there are provisions already in place and they have been applied in the North Townsite area and the expectation is that that would also be the case in the South I guess the way to try to simplify it is to say that these issues are, they are very valid issues and they are being covered, but they're being covered already. You already have, you might say, a platform. You have the GC Five zoning and you've got the design standards. It's the platform. It already covers these issues and how they'll be addressed before development occurs. The concern is that by putting in a development master plan requirement, it's going to create confusion and likely conflict.
Yes.
And that's the reason why we are asking it to be removed. It was never intended to apply to these areas.
Mr. Robinson, I see you in the queue, but.
Yes.
Do you have something really quick because Mr. Isham's been waiting a long.
I do, I was just going to add on that use table and we have summarized the code as Attachment Five that does talk about the various processes depending on whether the size or the use. It does distinguish parking lots of 10 or more spaces go through themselves a major site plan review as well as then parking lots affiliated with those that are of a certain size. So there's that additional review after the plating process.
Thank you. Mr. Isham, you've been patient.
Mr. Nelson, I don't know if I exactly understand the recommendation, but as I, as I read it, you refer us to page 9.4 and you have master planning and development review process highlighted. Do you want us just to delete that whole, that whole section? Is that what you're suggesting?
No.
Okay.
What we're suggesting is, when you made a motion to approve, you added a condition that, that the development master plan be required for all developments in Phase One and Phase Two except for, I believe you, the Little Bears, the relocation of Little Bears was exempted from that, and there's one other.
Road right away.
What we're recommending is that that condition basically be removed from the Phase One area and that the language on page 9.4 of, of the Girdwood Townsite Master Plan, which misdescribes, erroneously describes the development master plan process, that that language be modified or rectified so that it accurately reflects what the current regulations require.
Well, do you want us to, to basically make sausage or would you, would you like to have a crack at making the sausage first?
And then us just to say that, gee, that's great looking sausage, Mr. Nelson.
We're not asking the commission to rewrite the language that we're referring to on page 9.4. We were asking you'd leave it to discretion of the, of the Heritage Land Bank and a consultant to modify that language to make it accurately reflect what's already required by code.
And then we'll come back.
But relative to your particular motion, what we're asking is to modify the conditions of approval, which I believe, looking, we had the copy of your minutes in the packet, E1. Ms. Pease, do you have a copy of E1 now?
I'm looking at Mr. Fredericks.
Oh, okay. We'll get you, we'll get you your own here. I apologize if for some reason you didn't get it.
No, some attached here or in our little.
But on page.
Page 12.
Page 12 is your motion. You can see the underlined wording there in the first paragraph. It says, "This plan commits to future development master plans for future parcels in all three phases," as specified on page 9.4. What we're suggesting is basically removing the requirement for future master plans on Phase One. We're not disputing it for Phase Two or Phase Three. We're only asking it to be removed from Phase One, which is what the initial motion for reconsideration was limited to.
So in, so you want to say in phases two and three, correct phases?
And then you write, the next sentence. It's almost a statement to say Phase One for the. Actually, that's his accurate statement. You can leave the following sentence alone.
And then, Mr. Nelson, another question I have is when you modify the wording on page 9.4 there, would that come back, would that require some sort of a public hearing or approval process, since this is a, I believe it's a town site master plan that's been approved? I mean, what sort of action-
No, we're not recommending that. Basically, on, on- Do you have a copy of page 9.4?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes.
Basically, it's, it's basically inaccurate, because what it's, it says is that the Title 21, Chapter Nine mandates a two-step plan process for large tracts of land, first step is a master plan, second plan is step three, final, through development master plan for development parcel of the largest study area. And then it goes on to say that all future proposals in the South Towns will have to meet the requirements outlined for development master plan. Well, that's just not an accurate statement, because that's not what the zoning requires. That's not what, that's not what 21, Chapter Nine requires. So what we're just saying is simply clarifying this language so that it, it reads accurately, because a development master plan only is required for the G C R One district area of this town site master plan. It's not required for Phase One.
I'm not arguing with you.
What I'm saying is that we're asking, I guess, to, I guess, trust the, the process. This is going to be basically, well, the corrections, that's what you're saying. We're not changing the policy, we're not changing the substance. What we're doing is, is clarifying the accuracy of, of the language and what's required in 2109. That's what we're being, and I don't know if you wanted to, you know, to actually see the language or not, but that was our intent. But if, you know, if you want, we can, we can have the language revised and bring it back to you, but-
Well, I, I think that would be a good idea, just to take a look at it, just, you know, and you can explain it to us again.
If you feel it's necessary, we'll do that.
Well, I mean, I, you know, that'll be kind of the will of the commission if we want it.
Madam Chair, I, I think we can resolve the problem on our resolution without a whole lot of difficulty this evening.
Yes, well, we have the, the motion as it was passed on the table, so-
Right.
If we want to make any amendments to that, that's what we need to do.
Right. But, but we really need to wait to see the wording on 9.4 if we decide that's what we want to do also, because they need some time to work on that.
So we need to seek guidance. How soon could we have the, the revised language on 9.4?
Your next meeting.
Like Monday?
Yeah, we'll try to get, we'll probably try to get it to you by Friday.
Okay.
So you can have it to act on at your meeting on Monday, next Monday, the 13th.
Madam Chair, if we are going to, to, I was going to ask if you could do it on the spot and get back to us at the end of this meeting, but if we're going to do it, um-
Well, the only reason I would, as a courtesy, I would, I would confer with a consultant who wrote the report in, in Heritage Land Bank.
And, and I was going to ask if you could just pass it by the Chair of the Land Use Planning Committee, so that we know that they, I think, be fair to show it to them and let us know that, that's what they understand too.
Sure, that, that would be our intent.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, then, Mr. Isham.
So do we want to, do we want to correct our, our resolution tonight, or do we want to wait till we get the whole package and do it next week? I guess that's really the question.
Well, that's up to the body. We can go ahead and correct the resolution if we want to.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make a stab at it.
Okay.
Okay. Now, Madam Chair-
And it wouldn't take very much.
No. Madam Chair, I move that we correct the resolution that we passed on January 26th. It's on page 12 of the packet that was given to us, and it's, it was as stated by Ms. Pease, if you go down to line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the sixth line that's underlined, and remove the words "all three," and then add after the words "phases," 2 and 3. That would resolve that particular resolution right there, and I move that.
That's a motion. We're amending, yes.
This is a minute, not a resolution.
Right.
Amending.
We're mending, we're mending the motion.
The motion, yes.
And so I need a second to that motion.
A second.
It would be nice, thank you, Mr. Weddleton. And do you wish to speak to your motion, Mr. Isham?
Madam Chair, based on, on what Mr. Nelson told us, is that the fact that this requirement only applies to Phases Two and Three of the town site, and so that all three is incorrect. And so that, that basically resolves the, the problem right there. At the time, we didn't know this, we thought it did apply to all three.
Any, Mr. Weddleton?
Well, I'd also support it, and just add to findings on this, is that we've been told that the Girdwood Land Use Committee has agreed to this change, and that that's reflected in the minutes of their meeting on this. And then also that a lot of the community concerned, communities' concerns about this would be met by the requirements that there be a site plan review for any development of gross floor area over 2,000 square feet, and a major site plan review with a public hearing for any project with a gross floor area over 4,000 square feet.
Okay. Anything further? Hearing none. Is there any objection? Hearing none. That change is approved, that motion is approved as amended. Okay. Now, do we want to offer some guidance to staff with regard to changing page 9.4 of the final draft of the Girdwood South Town Site Master Plan? Ms. Weddleton?
No, no.
No. Okay. I'm all, thank you, Mr. Isham.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I don't think we need this in a form of a motion, but I think we'd just like to request that staff provide the, the rewording for page 9.4 with some sort of an indication that this has gone through the, the Land Use Planning Committee down there, it's acceptable to them, so that we all understand what's happened.
And we, and that we know what that proposed language is.
May I clarify, ask for clarification? It wasn't intended to actually take the revised language back to the Land Use Committee in Girdwood, it was to take it to the, work with a consultant and the Heritage Land Bank to have the, the language correctly state what is mandated in 21, in, in Title 21, Chapter Nine. It's simpler, it's, it's not changing the substance, it's just making accurate what is required currently in 21, in Title 21.
But it would seem to me that it would, it would also be appropriate that, that the people down in Girdwood that have been involved in this now know what, what the new correct wording is.
This, the, well, the document will be changed, and it will be published, and it will be made available, they will be aware of it. I guess my concern, I don't mind going down and explaining it to them, but I guess I just, this, the Planning and Zoning Commission's action has been delayed. And, and it's unfortunate, and I'll take responsibility for the delay, but is it really, I guess I'm asking the commission, if you want to actually get confirmation from the Girdwood Land Use Committee on the revised language on 9.4, it won't happen to our meeting in May, which is going to delay your action even further. So that's where I'm, we're happy to bring it back so you can see it, so you can act on it next week. But we're not going to, because of their meeting schedule, we're not going to be able to take it to them and then bring it back to you after that until May.
Well, you indicated that you'd talked to the chairman-
I did talk to them.
Okay, and is he an appropriate representative of the organization? That, that he could just look at it and say, okay, fine? I mean, all I'm trying is to make sure that somebody doesn't come back to us and say, hey, you changed this stuff and we didn't know that.
Well, if the change is merely reflecting the current law, I don't know what the problem is. If it's not creating something new, but just stating what the law is, it sounds like what's in there now is not accurate.
It's, it's just not accurate, we're just wanting to correct.
Wrong. Plain wrong. Mr. Weddleton, you're in the queue.
I had a, one question now, are we the final authority on approving this plan?
Yes.
Yes.
In that case, I would be most comfortable at least seeing at our next meeting the rewrite of this page. But I don't feel necessarily that it has to go back to the-
I don't either.
-Land Use Committee.
Okay.
I think that we just need some assurance that what's in there is accurate as far as being legally accurate and reflecting the current code. Mr. Wang, were you wanting to say something?
No, I mean, I don't think we need to take it back to the committee, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that it's really within the chairman's authority as an individual to say yea or nay on behalf of the committee, so I think it's kind of a symbolic effort to take it down to him.
And I just think what's in this plan needs to be accurate, and that there, it's not uncommon to have editorial changes done to, you know, I see this, this being kind of wordsmithing after it's been written by a consultant and been written by committee, including people like us, and then staff has to go back and try to clean it up after we've messed it up. Okay. Have we, last call for comments.
I, I, when I heard Mr. Isham's suggestion, what I envisioned was not that the Girdwood Land Use Committee has to vote on it again, but we don't have any record that I see in our packet of their, the Girdwood meeting of February 9th. And so I guess I would, I would feel comfortable if Mr. Nelson, after he puts in a new paragraph on page 9.4, takes out a paragraph, if, with the help of the consultant and H L B, to their satisfaction, I'd be happiest if it were sent to the head of the Girdwood Land Use Committee, just so that somebody down there knows what the text looks like, and they, they have a chance at least to say, no, 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 you got it all wrong, that's not what we heard you say.
Yeah, they, they won't have a chance at this point to have any official change, because it's been adopted, and these, this change is merely a correction so that it's right. There's nothing to contest. This isn't like they're adding anything new, Ms. Pease, or they're making a new policy.
But I, I, you know, we'd be happy to basically-
We can note-
Yeah, we'd be happy to notify the Land Use Committee down there, let them know that, you know, reflect the action that you took this evening, and that we're, we're going to be changing this to make it accurately reflect what 2109 says, and, and we'll basically give them copies of that. But my only concern is I hate to see you hold up your action, waiting for them to take some form of action, simply because it's going to, it could be another day of one or two months.
Okay. Mr. Isham?
Okay. I, I agree, we probably don't have to have their approval, because we've already taken action this evening to correct the stuff. But I, I would just, out of courtesy, like to see them saying, hey, by the way, we did change this, and here's the new wording, this is how it's going to appear.
Well, we'd be glad to share that with them.
And that's a courtesy to them, because they live there, you know?
And, and really, what the, the change is going to be isn't necessarily related to the action we took tonight, it's, you would have made that change anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's just an incorrect statement in the document. Okay. Are we done with this? Thanks for your good work. Now, if I can find my agenda, I don't know what I did with it, I may have actually thrown it in the trash. No, I've got it right here. Okay. It looks like the Eagle, E2, the Eagle River Site, Land Use Study has been postponed to May 4th, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the E3, which is the 2009-024, the Comprehensive Plan Review for the Turnigan Arm Comprehensive Plan. Is this yours, Mr. Tobish?
Yes, Madam Chair. I will give you an update. As you recall, we had a special public meeting in Indian on February 12th, in which we had lively testimony from about 25 people-
Mm-hmm.
-on top of written comments that preceded the meeting, and actually written comments that came after the meeting, from some that were present, and from some commissioners. We've prepared an issue response, based on those comments and testimony at the public hearing, and the written record afterwards. So tonight, you will be deliberating on four major items, and I'll summarize for you. The first, of course, is the base plan document that you had for February 12th. With the packet for that meeting were two sets of recommendations, a basic set of recommendations embedded in the packet, and then an addendum with, I think it was, an additional six recommendations attached to the packet that night. And then tonight, you also have the issue, 16-page issue response from that meeting, from staff. And then finally, there is a typo on our issue response paper that you need to be aware of, and that is on page 10 of the issue response, which is labeled E, E.3. Page 10 refers to a recommendation on page 22, it's on the top of page 10. That should read page 44. Wanted to make sure you saw that.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions from commissioners? Ms. Pease?
For, for some reason, I didn't get in my packet, I guess, any of the E items, so I guess probably the thing to do is I'll have to abstain from action on this, because I haven't reviewed any of it for E3.
Yeah, there was a small packet that came out in an envelope like this, and it had all of the physical planning stuff in it. And you, it sounds like you didn't get it, any of it, because it had the Department of Health and Human Services stuff in it for the work session, and-
And it may be my error, because I have a, a Dropbox that hasn't, that Courier hasn't been using for a long time, so I didn't, didn't check that, so.
Okay. Okay. Are there any?
I could take a look, but I can't read it.
No, it's a lot of stuff.
I can't, I can't read it.
Lot of stuff. Are we in a big hurry on this, Pete?
Madam Chair, I don't think we're in a big hurry.
I really value Ms. Pease's input and participation on this. And has everyone had the opportunity to go through this thoroughly? And we're so short tonight, we have a number of commissioners that aren't here, Ms. Yoshimura isn't here, Mr. Phelps isn't here.
Madam Chair, this is something you have to sit down and read and compare it with the actual, the plan.
Uh-huh.
I mean, you got to sit down and-
Look at-
Unfortunately, I was going to do it at work today, and I didn't bring the plan with me. I didn't bring the plan with me, so I was, all I could do was read the thing, and that was it.
Yeah.
I didn't know the context particularly.
So I'm almost of the mind to, before we spend a lot of time going through this around the table, I really hate to do it because it's important for us to keep moving on these things, but I feel it's important that our input be thorough. And it isn't because you didn't get this to us in a timely manner, it's just that this is a lot to absorb. We just had a lot of substantive stuff this week to go through. And by the way, we appreciate the issue response. That was the first part I went to. What do you folks want to do, if we were to postpone this, Thede, what would be a date you would recommend?
Madam Chair, I assume next week will still be preferable.
We can try to do it next week, we're kind of getting stacked up, but we can try to do it next week. We sure can. Would that be the commission's desire to try to do it next week?
Madam Chair, I would promise to read it very carefully. I don't feel, given the possibility that there might be a copy that's sitting at the bottom of my driveway, I don't feel I can personally ask to delay it. If others feel they could give a better response based on additional time, that's fine, but personally, I may be at fault, so I don't feel I can ask for that time.
Okay. Mr. Frederick, what's your desire?
I think it'd be best to have the considered input from more, at least Ms. Pease, but more of the commission would certainly be preferable.
That's my opinion, because I really value each and every one of your, you know, commissioners' input. How about on my left?
I have no trouble postponing for a week, but I may forget everything that I did.
Oh, just read it again, Sean, it's good practice. Mr. Wang?
I certainly don't object to postponing it. I think that's fair. We're short tonight, anyway.
Yeah, Mr. Eishem?
I'd like the extra time.
Okay. Well, then, a motion would be in order.
Madam Chair, move to postpone Case 2009-024 Comprehensive Plan Review for the Turnigan Arm Comprehensive Plan until next scheduled meeting, which is next week.
Okay, June 4, 13. And all of these things that we're postponing, I expect to come under old business again. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Is there any objection? Hearing none, this will be postponed till next week. Save your packets. Okay, now we're finally moving on to our regular agenda. Well, Case Number G2 has been postponed indefinitely. I apologize for not announcing that earlier. That's the Glacier View Case, 2009-044. And Case Number G3, the Ekutna Inc. Case, 2009-045, that's been postponed to next week. So we're on the last case on our agenda for tonight, which is Case Number G1, 2009-038. The petitioner is McLaughlin Youth Center, and it's an amendment for conditional use for a correctional institution. Could we have a staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Miss Request is an amendment to McLaughlin Youth Center's master plan. It's an update to the required 20-year master site plan. And if you note on, you should have a larger scale, the commission should, but it's on page 38 of the packet, is the map overview. Brief history, the planning commission reviewed and approved an amendment to the McLaughlin Youth Center's conditional use in 1993. At that time, a condition of the approval was that both McLaughlin and Alaska Psychiatric Institute were required to submit a 20-year master plan. That's when the master planning process started. At the time, they wanted a shared and subdivided 80-acre site at the southeast corner of Lake Odessa, Providence. Since that time, the two facilities, which have always been independently managed and operated, the commission approved a master plan, API's master plan, on March 6, 1995, and since that time, the sites have been replanted, separated out, and a new conditional use was approved separately for the API replacement facility. So in 1998, McLaughlin submitted an update to their 20-year master plan. This was the last update, the latest update that occurred. The amendments were basically to reduce, reflect the changed acreage of the site, some new structures, and some new beds for the program. What is before you now is that McLaughlin is requesting a final approval for their new construction plans and remodeling plans that will address deficiencies in the security of the facility. They'll also modify the 40-year-old facility to improve the effectiveness of the programs. They're not requesting any change in the number of approved beds or any such, or any type of an expansion of the site. What it is, is there's a master plan project list on page 5 of the packet. Funding has been secured for design for part of it. For the first four items, excuse me, first five items, they have construction funding and design funding. They're seeking funding for the remainder of it. What McLaughlin would like to do at this time is request, instead of the 20-year master planning process, these are what they see as their long-term goals to address the deficiencies on the site, bring it up to where it needs to be, and they would like to remove that requirement and just have this be the approved master plan instead of consistently having to do updates with it. And what they will do in that process is bring each of those items in, as they have, as they come online to review them through the department, set by standards in the UMed Plan, which has design standards, of course, as well. What had happened at that time is it will be addressed on the individual basis. What the commission will have done then is review this holistic master plan for their upgrades. The department has reviewed this request, and we recommend the final approval of this master plan, subject to eight conditions of approval on page 9 of your staff packet. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Are there questions of staff? Mr. Weddleton?
Just a quick one on this project list. They have funding for A through E, and then you'd said that the rest of the items were long-term. But Project P is not really long-term because it's on the schedule that's on page 9, item 7.
The Chair corrects. That is something, what that is, is, as interesting as it is it comes along, but there's an existing violation on the site due to not anything toward what it was, is the health of some trees and other situations, and they are going to have to replace some of those trees. That's being worked on, but we need to, because of the open violation issue, we need to work that out with Land Use Enforcement, the exact timeframe and methodology of how that planting is going to occur. And it's not something the department feels comfortable with leaving open-ended like the rest of the projects, because the master plan is adopted, we can handle those as they come in, and we first, of course, need to get the whole parking situation figured out on the property, but the trees, that has been a long-term thing that just needs to be finalized. We do have, however, there are some situations with their funding that they receive, and how exactly we're going to work that out, what type of an appropriate timeframe, but we're confident that that can be handled a little quicker.
Okay.
Follow-up on that, actually.
Okay.
So now I want to, so Project P includes correcting the problem in that item 7.
Correct.
But that's not all the landscaping that would be required, because the parking would have required landscaping and so on.
The Chair, that is correct. Item P is the perimeter and the screening fencing. That involves something a little separate. Item 7 is specifically addressing the violation issue that's existing. Item P on the master plan project list, if you will look, it is noted on, let me find the exact project page, which I believe, KLM0...
54.
Thank you. I'm learning my alphabet tonight. Sunday page 54, that shows the whole thing. They're going to do a lot of fencing work as well, and if any of that construction, if anything, you know, needs to be moved around, that will have its own separate inspections and its own separate permitting that will handle all of that. So that's kind of related with that. However, we wanted, the issue and the deficiency of the existing trees, we wanted to address now at this time a little faster. And it would probably involve moving some mature trees from their site so that we have actual trees that will, it would also save them money-wise, but it would also actually be planting mature trees in that area. So we're just going to work out something like that to handle it.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Same issue, condition 7 on page 8. Given the problem with the trees dying off before, I wonder whether and why the planning department wouldn't request a landscape and planning plan for the replacement of the screen buffer and also the parking lot B along Piper Street.
The Chair, we are going to address all of that. What we are looking at on the condition, condition 4 addresses that parking, and there are design standards in the UMed Plan regarding that. We're going to need, of course, that parking area is the most publicly visible thing, except that and Laurel Street perimeter landscaping are the most visibly obvious things. Condition 4 will handle that with the parking lot. They're still working on finalizing some of the issues on the design level yet where we'd want to require anything in a time certain for, is that something we will handle with that condition. Condition 7 is going to require a landscaping plan and a lot more information on what they're going to do with it. That's going to be handled in conjunction between the planning department and Land Use Enforcement. We didn't put the technical wording in there to have those plans done exactly like that because that kind of goes hand-in-hand with what we do. If the commission is more comfortable having that, we could certainly do it. Our concern with putting condition 7 in here is we didn't want to leave it just to code enforcement. We want to see exactly the types of trees that are going to be planted and make sure that there's something that's going to be able to survive, because there are additional, you know, snow plowing and other issues there that aren't necessarily the petitioner's fault dealing with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Weddleton, are you back in the queue again? Okay, is there anyone else that has questions of staff? Apparently not. I will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Petitioner or their representatives will have 10 minutes for their presentation. They may reserve some of their time for rebuttal. Individuals representing groups or organizations will be allowed five minutes, and people speaking on their own behalf as an individual will be allowed three minutes. Okay, the public hearing is open now, and I just ask that you state your name for the record when you come forward. And the petitioner is able to reserve some of their time for rebuttal if you just let me know how much of the 10 minutes you'd like to reserve. Yes, you may proceed.
My name's Ken Burkhardt with KPB Architects, representing McLaughlin Youth Center. Also with me tonight is Barbara Hemjin, the superintendent for the McLaughlin Youth Center. I think staff's done a good job of blowing out the information here. The McLaughlin Youth Center's been a good neighbor in the UMed District since the late 1960s. Just a year or two ago, they celebrated their 40th year anniversary, and we took the master plan also to the community council. You see in your packet that the community council is in favor of approving the master plan update. There is one public comment that questioned whether or not that the UMed District is the best place for a McLaughlin Youth Center. There's been a substantial investment over the years by the state of Alaska. In addition to the original facility being built in the 1960s, Gymonics was built in the early 1980s, a new intensive treatment unit was built back in 1986. In 1995, a new school building was built on-site, and a detention unit was built in approximately 1998, as well as a new administration facility. So what we're seeing here is a continued long-term investment by the state in this facility, and it's really strategically located. The public comment wondered if this facility might be better in either River or Gerwood. But in terms of people might have adult age, being arrested, and having to take that offender all the way to either River or down to Gerwood, family visitation, there's a number of issues. And I think the community council's support for the master plan update, I think ratifies that really they see the value of the facility being located where it is. And so what you see here before you is really a summary of a comprehensive state-wide assessment that was, report that was done in 2007. It covered all the other juvenile justice facilities in the state as well as McLaughlin Youth Center. Of the projects, at least that you see, that five have been funded for design and construction, and I'll deal with those specifically, and if the commission has questions on the others, we can get into that. The project A is exterior recreation yard and secure area of refuge. The secure area of refuge is located along Providence Drive. There's two emergency exits out of the existing facility, one from the gymnasium and one from the intensive treatment unit, and right now that those are just exit out into uncontrolled area. So by constructing a new screen wall, that will enable staff and kids to exit the facility and still be in a controlled situation. The second part of that is a new exterior recreation area. One of the other projects that made around in the list here is a new detention unit that will displace the existing exterior recreation yard, and for the kids to be able to blow off steam and use the recreational facilities outside is an important thing. Project B is a new parking area, and if you turn to page 40 in your packet, that's a more detailed description of that particular item. And if you read down to the end, you'll see that we note a number of different things that we do intend on supplying visual enhancement and internal landscaping to meet Title 21 requirements, and that we also plan to maintain the band of existing mature trees around Piper Street, and that's in keeping with the UMed plan in terms of trying to buffer parking from adjacent streets. So I think you'll see that each one of these items will have to be submitted for permit, and we'll have to meet all the regular Title 21 requirements. And as staff indicated, I think we've really set out a blueprint here. We didn't want to get so specific since we're just starting to zone on some of these items, but if you look into the detailed description of each one of these projects, I think you'll see that there's a good amount of detail there that we haven't been so bad not to give, so that planning staff will have a good deal of enforcement in meeting, seeing that we meet the intent of everything that we've laid out here. As staff has indicated, there's been more increase in the actual number of beds in McLaughlin as part of any of these projects. In regards to that, the parking project, there's a number of things that make this project a little bit unusual, that the projects are really logistically tight in terms of there not being a lot of area for a contractor to operate, although it fits under the Title 21 guidelines, or it's closest to a healthcare facility except hospitals, and the parking ratio for that is one parking space for every four beds. Really less than capture the total parking need that here, that there's practically 140 staff, that's comprised of McLaughlin staff, including school district teachers and others who use the facility. And so we like the language, and I think in condition number 4, the recommendation of approval by staff, that we'll look through those parking calculations along with planning staff to come up with the... staff to come up with the correct number of spaces. I would also note that the API facility falls under that exact same guideline in terms of required number of parking spaces. That's an 80-bed facility. And if you strictly use that as the minimum amount of cars, they'd come up with a required parking load of 20 cars. And that's very much less than what API needs. But I've got an aerial photograph here. In that photograph, if you counted all the parking spaces in API's lap, they have approximately 180 spaces there. So I think that working with planning staff, we can calculate the correct amount of parking for the facility. Project C is a new 25-bed detention unit. We started on the design of that facility. That will be located in the area that's replacing the existing recreation yard. But the kids that are to be moved into that facility will be moving from part of the building that was built originally in the 1960s. It's outdated. The infrastructure, plumbing systems, ventilating systems in that part of the building need to be replaced. And that's really an essential part of the plan here. Project D is remodeling and expanding an existing intensive treatment unit. That unit was constructed in the mid-1960s. Has poor sight rounds for observing and monitoring the kids. It's a 20-year-plus old structure, and it's in need of refurbishment. And Project E is the, what I referred to earlier as the 40-year outdated construction, is the detention 2 unit. And what the McGlaughlin Youth Center would like to do there is take that space and remodel it into a medical suite and training facility. Page 25, in 24 and 25 of your packet, there's a couple of comments from UMed staff in their review of the project. On page 24, I'd just like to comment that we may have misstated in terms of the exact drainage configuration out there. But what we do agree with staff in that respect is that building permit and building review process will be used to ensure compliance with all MRA stormwater design standards. That project will have to be permitted, just like everything else here. And so we don't doubt that we'll be able to meet all those requirements. On page 25, regular has a couple of comments, or one comment regarding the existing access points along Providence Drive. As you can see from the aerial photograph, there's one access point on Providence Drive. And a location east of Laurel Street.
And sum up, and I'm sure there'll be some questions.
Okay. That we think that that is really necessary for fire department access. The only way you can make a left-hand, yeah, a left-hand turn from that parking lot areas from that area. We also have dealt with another curb cut. We've coordinated with UMed, improvement projects is gonna happen on Providence Drive. And they've agreed that that needs to remain for emergency access in the future. Do you have to take any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions for the petitioner? Mr. Isham?
I have questions concerning the parking. From what you say, you're gonna need a whole lot more parking than would be authorized on one space per four beds. Is that, is that really the bottom line? You need more than, more than what would be authorized?
Well, I think it's open to interpretation as what would be authorized. If you look, Title 21 does allow you to break down each project in terms of multi-use into its separate components. But if you looked at it strictly as a healthcare facility, other than a hospital, it would severely understate the requirement for parking. And so we don't think it's such a simplistic issue. We think if we take an overall approach of looking at each one of the different uses on the site and build up the parking from there, that will give us a number that is, reflects the parking demand, and is also less simplistic, but also allowed by Title 21. So that's why we like the language in Condition Number 4, and that we'll get concurrence with planning staff on that.
Well, I have a question on Condition Number 4 here. They always say that is, in the event of a variance for a lower parking space requirement is granted, a copy of the agreement should be recorded with the state district recorder's office. What about if it's a higher parking space requirement? Shouldn't we record that also?
I guess I would be up to the commission. I would note that in 1998, the previous master plan, that there was a stipulation that a parking agreement should have been recorded, that McGlaughlin, Minnesota Building Safety and Planning Staff, and even my own visit to the state's website for recorded documents came up empty in that regard. So since parking is a pretty complex issue in terms of the number of uses, we concur in any event that parking calculations probably should be recorded. So that we're not reworking that like we are today without being able to find that information from 1998.
Okay, so what you're saying is whatever we decide probably ought to be recorded, whether it's higher or lower?
Yes, I agree with that, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Chambers?
To the Chair, I was just gonna clarify. Mr. Isham, this case files pretty clearly under the requirements for parking under Title 2145 O8W, other uses. In the case of use not specified, it shall be the same as the use described in the section which is most similar, but if it's a mixed use, the total requirement has to be added up separately. And it may be reduced by the administrative official. Basically, what it does, if it's not even close to anyone, we sit there with the ITE manual and do parking studies or whatever. Parking studies don't necessarily need to be done in this case, there's a lot of historical data. The same thing had to happen with API when they moved to a new building at APH across the way. Because they historically have been kind of considered, you know, healthcare facility, but the one per four is not gonna cut it. One of their design, they came in for concept conditional use before they came in for final conditional use. One of the requirements of the condition of APH was similar to what we're doing at McGlaughlin, et cetera, especially in the UMed district, which was to not have more parking than is required, than is the minimum required. In other words, we don't want a lot of extra parking area, we don't want a lot of impervious services, those types of things. We want to park, to meet the parking that's required, but not a lot of excess parking. That's the type of take that the traffic engineer is going to be taking on this one. It will probably require some negotiation considering their needs as well, because it's a special case. There's too many different types of uses going on there to fit it in one category in Title 21. Including the rewrite, there are just a few uses in town that are just quite a bit different.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pease?
With regard to the, I guess this might be to Ms. Chambers. With regard to the comments from PMNE for drainage analysis, would those already be covered under the requirement of Condition 4 for a revised parking lot layout? It just says reviewed by planning department and traffic department, it doesn't mention drainage analysis to be reviewed by PMNE.
To the Chair, not all land use permits are reviewed by PMNE and so on. Somewhere in the town that's not in the building safety service area, you'd have to have that specific requirement to have PMNE review it. However, anything within the building safety service area that requires a building permit will go through PMNE for drainage requirements. So that was an advisory comment. I called Ms. Walsh at PMNE prior to this hearing to verify. And those all go through their office.
Okay.
It's covered. Because it's not just the parking lot, if I may add. It's the whole site will have some different issues that need to be looked at.
Thank you. Any further questions for the petitioner? Apparently not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify in this matter? If so, please come forward. Anyone else at all? Hearing and seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And the matter rests with the commission. Mr. Weddleton?
Well, does the petitioner, did he use all his?
He does not have any rebuttal time left.
Oh, maybe come up, I got some questions. I was just, I was holding off till the crowd of people had their say.
It appears that the crowd is pretty moderate tonight.
You know, I wondered if there were, was any code requirement that you're meeting that did anything to diminish the safety and security of the facility?
No, but if I understand your question correctly, I think all of the building projects here as part of the master plan are meant to enhance the safety and security of both the staff, the kids, the community, and enable McGlaughlin to do their job more effectively. But in addition to the kids that are in the facility, there's also a boys and girls club on-site. There's actually kids in the community that are there on a daily basis, but they spend the night at home. And so the campus is actually quite a bit more open than what you might think in terms of first appearance. And being able to control the movement of the kids, yes, if they had to be exited from the gym in the event of a fire right now from the gymnasium or that intensive treatment unit, they would just be taken out along Providence Drive and then the kids, you know, could bolt and run, and that wouldn't serve anyone's interest. So like I said, there was a statewide assessment report, and all the recommendations that you see in terms of this master plan report are being carried forward from that assessment report.
Okay, there is one thing in particular. You had a barbed wire in a Y, Y shape, I guess, and you're gonna chop it down so it's only one way, is that?
Right. But I guess we'd heard that the commission was not enamored of the concertina razor rail on top of the perimeter fencing. And we could see that that would be a very forbidding internal aesthetics. And so that's one of the projects that we have listed, is that we would take down the concertina rail and at least one of the V arms and replace the, apply to the top part of the fencing, some no-climb fabric. No-climb fabric has a lot smaller holes that you can't get your fingers or toes into. And so that's a lot of expensive material. But in terms of the impact on the community, we think that, we've heard that the planning and zoning commission and feedback from others, that the existing condition out there isn't as desirable visually. And so that's why it made on the list here. We think it's a less intrusive way of providing the equivalent security that they have right now.
Good, I'm sure that'll be appreciated. I had a couple of things that I wanted to maybe add to the conditions, three or four things. Should I go through those now, or do you wanna?
Well, if you need questions answered to the petitioner, you can ask him. Otherwise, he can sit down and we can have, make a motion and deliberate it. But if you, this is the time, I mean, you can continue to ask him a question or two.
To the Chair, if you wanted to find out what the petitioner's take would be on potential motions, that would be the way to do it now. But otherwise, as Ms. Jones said, they wait.
Right, it's just two things, and I, so would it be okay with you if we added to Condition 4, parking will not exceed the minimum required by code?
But I guess I would try to suggest that I would prefer, from the petitioner's standpoint, that you didn't add that language. And the reason for that is that depending if the, if the department ruled that, okay, one space for every four beds is the maximum parking, and that's all you get, that I think that would be, I guess, without having the negotiations completed or the analysis completed, I would very, I think having a condition like that would possibly hamstring the petitioner. I noticed that in the Title 21 rewrite, that there's an additional percentage of parking that's required above the minimum. So I don't see, I don't think it would make sense to have a zero tolerance for anything above the minimum amount of parking on-site. In addition to the parking of staff from McGlaughlin and Anchorage School District, and the probation officers of approximately 140 people, there's training functions that happen in this facility with other people coming from off-site. With 150 kids, parents' visitation is another significant component. And so it's very difficult to come up with a magic number of what that should be. And while I do appreciate the planning and zoning commission's being concerned and not willing or not wishing to overpark, a condition that says that there will be nothing above the minimum, I think, is rather more restrictive than even the Title 21 rewrite. And so I think maybe reading it as current language, I think, is what I would suggest. But the commission, of course, has to finally say in the matter.
Thank you.
Okay, actually, that's, that's good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Isham?
Just one other question in regards to the parking. You mentioned the parents visiting, and then you have, obviously, the Anchorage School District with their teachers and so forth. Do visiting hours occur in the evenings and teaching hours occur during business day? Is that typical? Or, you know, so do we get dual, kind of dual use out of the lot?
I think Barbara Hencham might be better suited to answer that question than I.
Hi, I'm Barbara Hencham, and I'm the superintendent. Absolutely, we have, in general, visiting is in the evenings. When our greatest number of parking spaces are required Monday through Friday during the day, we've got Anchorage School District staff that are there, probation officers generally work during the day, some work some evenings and weekends, with some state office, Division of Juvenile Justice State Office folks that have offices at our facility. So all of those spaces are, many of those are available in the evening when we do have visiting. Although we do have, also have some visiting during the day. Parents coming in for meetings, or kids' planning meetings, family counseling, a whole variety of things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any further questions.
Could I make one additional comment to follow on to?
Very quick.
Another thing that's going to be happening here is the parking east of the facility. And approximately the location that I mentioned there is where the new juvenile justice center and recreation yards will be going. And there's approximately 50 parking spaces there that will be disappearing over time as portions of this master plan are built on future, portions beyond the scope that I'm associated with in terms of building projects. And so what we'd like to do is develop enough parking that fulfill the needs of the facility even after those, that parking goes away in terms of that juvenile justice center being built.
So basically, then you're going to calculate the parking, assuming that the place is fully built out?
Yes, I think that would be.
And that by what you're gonna ask for in this new parking lot?
Right.
So it may look like initially, you got a lot of parking space that you don't really need, but it's gonna go away?
Yes.
But it looks like that they're planning enough to accommodate a buildout of the entire master plan. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. There being no further questions, I'm ready for a motion. I'm waiting. Thank you, Mr. Isham.
Madam Chair, I move to approve, let's see, what's the case number on this?
2009-038.
It isn't on the first page here, okay. 2009, okay, there, 038. State of Alaska, McGlaughlin Youth Um, the state will ask McLaughlin Youth Center to amend the, uh, master plan conditional use in the PLI District to update the 20-year master site plan. A subject, move for approval, subject, uh, to the, uh, conditions that are listed on page nine, and totally on page nine, there are eight conditions there, with the following change to condition four. Uh, on the fourth line down, I would, uh, take out the words, uh, A and lower, so that would read, "In the event of variance for parking space requirement is granted, a copy of the agreement shall be recorded." And the reason I want to do that, well, I-
I need, and Mr. Wang seconded into the motion, so you can speak to your motion, Mr. Eishen.
Thank you. I really like, I wasn't supposed to talk about it until you got seconded. Okay, I, I really think that, that there may be a lower or a higher parking space requirement, we don't know, there's going to be negotiations on that, so I just think that whatever they come up with for parking needs to be, uh, needs to be recorded so they don't run into the situation that they've run into in the past. And other than that, all the other, uh, conditions I find quite reasonable.
Yes, Ms. Pease?
Yes, I'd like to propose a further amendment, just to clarify, condition seven doesn't change the requirement, um, and I'll look to see if Ms. Chambers agrees that this clarifies it. Um, it currently reads, and I'll, I'll insert a couple of words, "The petitioner shall resolve the following with the planning department. Approximately 35 trees per year should be planted within the screening landscaping," I would insert the words, "along Laurel Street in order to resolve the current landscape violation," and then cross out the words "to meet the required plantings," and then continue with the sentence, "within three years of the date of this approval." And then in the last sentence, I would amend it to read, "This shall include," insert "a landscape and planting plan approved by the planning department to resolve," and then continue with the word "methods of planting and, planting materials."
No objection?
Fine, Bobby.
Ms. Chambers, do you object?
No.
Okay. So, that, um, amendment has been accepted by the maker's motion and the second. Any further amendments? Hearing none. Any further comments?
Madam Chair, just to sort of, um, speak and provide the findings-
We need some findings of fact on the rest.
Yes, um, I'll do some and then someone else can fill in.
Okay.
Um, the staff and the petitioner appear to have gone carefully over the program requirements that have been identified, um, during an audit of the facility, and it appears that the community, community benefits broadly, uh, both the general community from the aesthetic improvements such as the removal of the concertina wire and the correction of the Laurel Street buffer, and also from the security improvements which benefit both the public and the, um, the employees and the juveniles here, such as the secure refuge. Um, the staff has, has checked carefully with the university and medical district framework plan and made sure that the project as proposed complies with the layout and design requirements of that plan. So, um, I will be supporting this, uh, resolution.
And, Mr. Weddleton?
And I'll be voting to support too. I'd like to add also that, um, University area community council voted to support the project. And I'd also add that generally, it seems like we'd want more specifics on the parking requirements, but in, in this case, it's fairly complicated because of the multiple uses on the site and because of future expansion. I'd also like to point out in the dialogue in the presentation that they currently have a capacity for 165 beds, but a, uh, permission for 200 beds, which will also, um, add to the parking, uh, that will be allowed.
Okay. Anything further? Well, if not, I'll add a couple of additional thoughts. Uh, this update to the master plan, uh, just, I think, is bringing the facility up to dem, uh, to date, both with the types of additional services that they're, uh, offering and consolidation of, of some services, and, um, it really provides predictability to the community about what's going to happen with this property in the future. And I think McLaughlin Youth Center has definitely, you know, generally been a very good neighbor in the community. And with regard to whether or not it should be there, that issue's been resolved a long time ago, and it is, in my opinion, a good spot for this type of a facility. It's close to, um, major medical care, it's close to the university, it's close to a lot of other institutional proceedings, it's close to downtown where the court system is, it's close to the police department if they have a problem. We have both the state troopers and the Alaska, uh, or the Anchorage Police Department very close at hand, and, uh, I'm very pleased to see some of the new programs that are going in and that you have room to accommodate them, so you have a very active complex there. Uh, and I'm very pleased to see this level of, um, not only land use planning, but the programmatic planning going on too, and having it expressed, uh, in part on your land use plans, so I will be supporting it. See any objection to the motion? There's no objection. This passes unanimously, and, uh, good luck. All right. We've got just a couple of pieces of administrative stuff to take care of before we go home for the night.
Madam Chair, after anything that the commission has, I have a couple of things to follow up with from Joe Rose, or I shank, can't show it back to work in the morning.
Okay. Well, one of the things I want to, uh, let you know first of all, is that we're going to be having some additional work sessions that are not reflected on your calendar, and some of these relate to-
That's it.
-traffic issues that are coming up. Um, and I know that we're going to be having a hearing in either late May and then with probably a follow-up hearing in early June on the Kinnick Arm Crossing.
Correct, that's what I'm told to discuss with you and not show my face again.
Yes.
May, May 11th and June 1.
And June 1.
Five thirty AMATS work session on June 1 on, and the, that will be the AMATS 2010 to 2013 tip amendment, and on May 11th is the AMATS LRTP amendment to delete the Kinnick Arm Crossing, five thirty LRTP work session regarding that.
Yes, and then we have the hearing that evening.
Correct.
And then on June 1st, we have deliberation on it.
Correct.
And so, and then we have, um, as you saw, if you got a chance to look at your calendars, we are just busy, busy, busy. Our work session schedules changed a little bit for April and May, our works, uh, I'm sorry, our directors' meetings this month, it will be on April 23rd, and at that work, at that directors' meeting, it includes a work session on the Eagle River Downtown Overlay Ordinance. So, it's, if you can be there, it's important to try to make it. April 23rd at noon, directors' meeting.
Correct.
And then in May, our, um, directors' meeting will be on the 21st instead of the 14th.
No, it was scheduled the 14th and the 21st.
Yes, the 14th instead of the 21st, sorry. I, it's right on the calendar.
It's too late for times.
I know. And then, uh, I am not sure on the, the 4th of May, what all we have on our meeting for that night, it says Eagle River Land Use Plan Continued, the final SPR DeBar Walmart, Site Plan Review DeBar, DeBar Walmart, two site plan reviews for roads, 72nd and 88th, two ordinances, utilities and Eagle River Downtown Overlay, and, oh, Eagle River Downtown Overlay, and rezone Mountain View Community Arts Center.
What it is, is a really big consent agenda.
Okay.
With, um, why not luckily you have done Walmart, all this, all the Walmart thing is, is bringing back to show you what they've resolved with staff, so that the commission has final say over it because it was such a big public concern items.
Yes.
But there are two road design plans that are coming forward. Um, one of the ordinances is on utilities and undergrounding, one of the ordinances on Eagle River Overlay and then a, a rezones, but it's a heavy consent agenda is what it is. Really heavy.
Anyway, and then we move on to June and, uh, June, well, it doesn't look too bad yet, but May looks brutal, brutal. We have three, two meetings and a tentative meeting for June 18th. Anyway, do you have any more news from the planning department, Angela?
No, the, the PMZ cases, by the way, just looking at the inbox in, in Patty's office isn't too bad for June in terms of number of cases, but there's some biggies.
Okay.
So, but again, it won't be a ton of stuff, but it'll be mainly the physical planning ongoing saga of those things.
All right, well-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could make a quick comment, I'm sure everyone saw that the first meeting of, some of us, perhaps most of us, um, in regard to the remainder of Title 21 is, has been scheduled for this Thursday-
Yes.
-at the planning department from one-
Yes, and I want to thank those of you that have volunteered.
And I, particularly, although, um, uh, Tyler and Erica are not, not in the room, but I would hope that Angela would carry back, um, my, uh, good thoughts to them for, for having, uh, organized this and scheduled it so that we can do a third job-
A third job.
-of, of the rest, very important rest of the, of Title 21.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate, uh-
Absolutely.
-you and Nancy and John Weddleton and Art and Connie for volunteering to, uh, do these, and since we have so many participating and trusting, and can you check with Erica to make sure she's noticing those meetings?
And then is that meeting, I'm sorry, I missed that part of it. Is it the Thursday?
Thursday from 1 to 3.
The Thursday one, okay, yeah, I'll make sure she's noticing that.
At least posting them someplace because there's so many commissioners attending.
I'm, I'm sure Supery is doing that and I will also let-
Okay.
-let them both know that and I will also pass them on, pass on the damage itself.
Okay, because it's important that-
Well, there was the email notice today, but, um-
Yeah, well, I got an email, but I don't know where they come from or what the source is, so I just, I get so many planning commission emails. Any commissioner comments? Okay, I will send out an, I will, uh, everybody take, keep your AMATS, um, that resolution and I'm going to follow up on that, and I'll, I'll call you in the morning, Angela, and we can talk, I'll talk to you before I call Lance.
Right on, and if you can keep, I'll ask you to keep your gravel packets if you can.
Yes, and there was some stuff laid on the table about it tonight, so for those of you that are going to participate, keep it.
Yep.
Yes.
Keep our, um, DHHHS facility site selection, that's coming up next week, right?
And we should keep all of our stuff on the Gerwood things that are coming back to us next week.
And Turnigan.
And Turnigan.
But I packed your bags so you can't have them back, just kidding.
No.
If you need a bag to pick them up in.
And next week, I'll be leaving early, around 10:00 or 10:30 because I have to leave and go catch an airplane to go to Las Vegas.
We, we need to schedule the things so that the stuff that you're excused from is last.
Okay, even though I promised him he was going first? Talk, talk to Tim. Okay, tell him I- And tell him I fibbed. Okay, I have a sideache. I need a motion, are you making the motion to adjourn, somebody?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any objection?